Week, spring, four weeks, fall, and forty-four weeks vacation.
No, I don't wish.
Like forty-three people, so.
What?
Well, then, I guess we'll wait till you let everyone in.
All right, I'm gonna let him in now.
Thanks, Dave.
And we're recording, so we're good.
And you're able to let all forty-three people in at once? So everyone's on?
Yep, they're popping in now.
Okay, well, then I'm gonna get this started, then. Pursuant to, I'm calling the meeting to order pursuant to section seven E of the Open Meetings Act, I as President of the McHenry County Conservation District have determined that an in-person meeting is not practical or prudent at this time because of the ongoing COVID-19 pandemic and Governor Pritzker's related disaster declaration. I further determine that the physical presence of an employee or member of the public body at the regular meeting location is not feasible due to the disaster described in the Governor's declaration. Then I would ask everyone to rise and will join in the pledge of allegiance, and we'll do the best we can on that. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Then I'd ask for the opening roll call.
Trustee Thomas?
Here.
Trustee Campbell?
Here.
Trustee Fritz?
Here.
Trustee Dom?
Present.
Trustee Brand?
Here.
Trustee Cook? I think you're muted. Trustee Cook?
Yes, I'm sorry.
You're fine, and trustee Hunning?
Present, so everyone is here. Could I have a more, okay, I'm sorry, I've skipped to, uh, let's see, Dave, could you read the conservation ethic, please?
I would. Goal number six, to foster a conservation ethic among McHenry County citizens, helping all of us, regardless of our basis of our interest in nature, to develop a greater awareness of and a role in the responsibility for the total community of life. Conservation ethic asks us to assume a moral duty to become educated about conservation issues and then act on that information. Conservation ethic is an attitude that recognizes the importance of preserving the natural heritage of the county's open space. And what, do I go to the next one?
Goal four?
Goal four, to interpret and promote the overall significance of natural and cultural resources and to promote public understanding and support of the district land management practices.
Thank you, Dave. And Linda, could you do the stewardship pledge?
Sure, I wanna move this so I can see what I'm reading. I don't, I'm sorry. All right, I'll try. Five-point-o conservation stewardess pledge, we pledge to make a difference by standing up for our water, wildlife, and way of life in McHenry County. Our quality of life in McHenry County depends on how healthy and sustainable natural resources, thoughtfully developed cities and towns, and a strong, a strong economy and beautiful outdoor places to explore, discover, and recreate. Number two, we will protect and restore wetlands, streams, and rivers, which helps to reduce flooding.
Thank you, Linda. With that, could I have a motion to approve or adopt the agenda for the night?
Okay. I'll move, this is Lynn.
Lynn, I have Lynn moving to approve the agenda. Is there a second?
A second.
Uh, Pat, I have Pat for a second. If, if no one has any objection, objections or changes to that, I would ask for roll call vote to approve.
Trustee Brand?
Yes.
Trustee Fritz?
Yes.
Trustee Cook?
Yes.
Trustee Campbell?
Yes.
Trustee Dom?
Yes.
Trustee Thomas?
Yes.
Trustee Hunning?
Yes, motion passes unanimously. That brings us to our special recognition tonight and presentation and introductions of this. So I would like to have a motion to approve resolution twenty-one dash zero-five, recognition of reg, Weg Thomas, Wedge Thomas, I'm sorry, two thousand twenty-one Conservation Champion Award.
I also move.
Dave?
I'll second.
Lynn? Roll call vote, please.
Trustee Campbell?
Yes.
Trustee Cook?
Yes.
Trustee Brand?
Yes.
Trustee Thomas?
Yes.
Trustee Dom?
Yes.
Trustee Fritz?
Yes.
Trustee Hunning?
Yes, motion carries unanimously. Congratulations to Wedge, Mr. Thomas. Would you, who would, is there anyone that would like to read this, or would you like me to read the resolution?
I'm afraid I don't have it in front of me, John.
Okay, I have it in front of me, so I, I can read it. Okay, whereas in the Henry County Conservation District herein after referred to as the district, is a conservation district organized and existing under the laws of the state of Illinois seventy ILCS four, four-ten. And whereas, one of the purposes of the district is to preserve and maintain wild land and hold it for the education, pleasure, and other open space values. And whereas, the Board of Trustees of the district did authorize the creation of a conservation award, awards program to recognize extraordinary contributions of individuals through the Conservation Champion Award and the Conservation Legacy Award through resolution eighteen dash zero-three on January eighteenth, two thousand and eighteen. And whereas, Wedge Thomas was nominated and recommended for the Conservation Champion and Conservation Legacy Awards Committee to receive the Conservation Champion Award in two thousand twenty-one, and now therefore be it resolved by the Board of Trustees of the district that it is desirable by the Board of Trustees of the district to approve the conferring of the two thousand twenty-one Conservation Champion Award to Wedge Thomas in honor of the work and contributions to the conservation in McHenry County. And be it further resolved that the President and Secretary of the Board of Trustees are hereby authorized to execute, execute the resolution, and that Executive Director is authorized to execute other necessary documents to execute the intent of this resolution. In witness whereof, the resolution twenty-one dash zero-five has been executed this twenty-third day of February two thousand twenty-one by the President and attested by the Secretary of the Board of Trustees of the district. Congratulations, Mr. Thomas. Thank you for all, all the work and everything that you've put into this district. We've made it fifty years, and a lot of it, from what I understand, is, is due to your efforts. Could you, would you like to say anything to the board or to the public we have here?
First of all, would like to thank you all. Am I unmuted, okay?
You're doing great.
Okay, I'd like to thank you all. It has been a pure pleasure for me to work with the district all these years. When I got Elizabeth's letter informing me of this award, my man, my mind, of course, began to race back over time and recall so many wonderful things that have happened over the years as the district has evolved and grown and become such a wonderful and powerful resource for the people of McHenry County. And I can only express my great gratitude for the people of McHenry County who first voted in the district and for the staff and leaders and employees who, over the years, have developed and nurtured the land, the plants, the animals of the district. I have nothing but admiration and gratitude for them. And I can only express my own gratitude for the talents that I have been given to take pictures and write copy and draw maps for the people of McHenry County. So thank you. It is, I'm very grateful to you all. Thank you again.
You betcha, well deserved.
Thank you.
You, all that'll, all that work will live on for decades to come, or probably longer.
One thing I gotta remember, I think I got a kick out of it as you started doing maps with pencil and paper, long before GIS and all that other kind of stuff, so that's pretty cool.
Yeah, that, the original maps were done with a compass and pacing off the trails and just observing what, when features were there that might make a, a site map more interesting.
Cool.
Things have changed.
Definitely, so, well, thank you. Anyone else have anything they'd like to say?
No, thank you very much, the work is fabulous. I wish I was part of it for a lot longer than this, but it's a wonderful legacy and, and, and I know you'll continue to do great work, so thank you very much.
Thank you.
It's unfortunate we can't all be together tonight, that would be, that would make even, even more, would make the, the fest, make things more festive, but, okay, thank you. With that, I'm gonna move on to recognition of Lynn Campbell as a Master Board Member of Illinois Association of Park Districts. Lynn completed the, the work that goes into getting such recognition, and Lynn, could you tell us a little bit about the, the program that you went through?
Oh, okay, yeah, it was really more, I'm actually not real good with this kind of thing, actually, the recognition, but last year especially with COVID and everything going virtual, one of the things, IAPD has already always been a source of information, but they were, they were putting out a little bit more content that was free and available, kind of free webinars for board development, in addition to their board development program, which are onsite training programs that they have available. But with budgets being tight, I was trying to take advantage of things that really didn't cost anything. But in doing that, I kinda was looking more at the board development program, and it was talking about different things you had to do to earn certain points, and more as an exercise for myself, I thought, well, I never really kinda kept a list of things that I was doing, so that was really all it was, and I went back to my calendar and kinda looked at some of the things I was doing, both on meetings on behalf of the district and working with prep and so on, and, and you get certain, it just depends on where you're, you're challenging, channeling your energies and, and where that fits in with the agency, and so.
Excellent effort, Lynn, very, very neat to do that, and thanks for your effort, I appreciate it.
They're very good.
Yeah, that's, it's a good program, they offer a lot, I mean, even this conference that they had, there's almost too much now that things are virtual, you know, there's a lot to choose from.
Very good, well, I think Elizabeth has included a link that any of the rest of us that are interested.
Yeah, I saw that, that's a lot of work, Lynn, a lot of work.
Thank you.
Very good, thank, thanks for all your effort. We go on to recognition of Elizabeth Kessler for her Lifetime Achievement Award for Illinois Park and Recreation Association. Congratulations, Elizabeth, I mean, a lifetime, I, like I told you the day that I congratulated you, you're a little young for this, but, um, you know, a lot more to do, a lot more to do, but maybe, maybe you can get two Lifetime Achievement Awards if you work hard enough.
I might have nine lives, maybe.
There you go, so, I asked Lynn for a little background on hers, but I don't know that you can go through a whole lifetime in, in the lot of time we have, but congratulations.
Well, I just, I wanna say thank you, and it's an honor and, and absolutely to be recognized by your colleagues and peers, and it really comes down to an amazing agency and the people that you work with over your career, and I've had great fortune to work for two amazing, exceptional organizations, both at the Skokie Park District where I kinda groomed my first nineteen years, and then the remainder I've been here for fifteen. And there's similarities with teams that work towards high performance and excellence, and it's the passion, and I feel so great that, that our communities really enjoy the work that we do, and it really is a reflection, not so much on me, but it's about the entire team and the district and the ability for the board and staff to allow us to, and to allow me to, to do what, what I enjoy, and that's servicing the public and other fellow professionals, so, thank you.
Well deserved, well deserved, Elizabeth.
Thank you, Elizabeth, for all your efforts, that's great, congratulations.
Congratulations.
With that, we will move on to trustees' report. First of all, I'd, I'd call on Lynn and Dave, they have been working with the, with the new county board members, could you give a little report on that?
You go ahead, Lynn, please. Lynn did a lot, I have to tell you, she sent out the letters, she sent us the follow-up, she did the email, she just was on fire, so, and it all happened a lot because of Lynn, so.
Well, yeah, you're, I, you might be overselling it.
Yeah, no, I'm not.
Yes, yes, you're, um, no, I, I think what we're trying to do is, um, so, we kinda, for a while, with, especially with COVID and everything else, it's been a little bit harder to do outreach and, outreach and advocacy, and as we know, the, back in twenty seventeen, John, when you and I came on, we, we kinda did that shift in the, in the formatting of the committees and got away from the two committees, from the finance and admin and outreach and advocacy, and so that we could all come together, really more around finance, but to do, to do both, but the finance committee and working with that kind of took precedence over time. And we've been kind of in isolation for the last year, so I guess the idea is to, to now get back out and try again at reaching out to other government officials throughout the county, starting with the county board. So maybe there's some opportunities there to move forward, so one of the ideas was to try to outreach to new county board members to provide opportunities to, to kinda give background on our, on our board, where we've been, and to give them an opportunity to answer questions. We did go through a first round, it was a little, you know, I think the first time through, you're gonna think of all the things that maybe you could've done, you know, a little differently, or what would we do the next time, and so I think we need to kind of refine, refine what we're doing, but we did have a meeting with Jessica Phillips, and we also had a meeting with Teresa Meshes and Tracy Von Bergen. And so we, Jeff Swartz did reach out to me at the end of last week, and we're hoping to, and I was gonna give you a call, John, to see, you know, to let you know what's going on there, and so he would like, he's, he prefers to meet in person, which is fine, and we're, I'm just looking at the schedule now to see what we can do.
Very good.
Thank you, Lynn, thanks, Elizabeth, for you too.
You felt, you felt the meetings went well and, and good questions and follow-up?
Especially because they're brand new to the county, Nate, one, I forgot who it was, maybe it was Teresa has used some of the sites, but a lot of it was new information, Elizabeth went over the, the District Act and some of the basics, and then we talked about budgets and how we're connected with regard to trustee appointments and accepting the budget. Yeah, I thought it was a very good half, we kept it to a half hour, and I thought it was real good outreach, I thought it was good, they all seemed to appreciate it, so it was good.
It'll certainly be better if we, once we can start doing things in person again, I think it just, it would be more conducive. And one of the things we were trying to work around was, four of the new members all sit on the Public Health Committee, and so that made it a little bit difficult with, in terms of OMA and open, open meetings, forums and all that, so, yeah, see how we can do this moving forward when things return a little bit more to normal.
That would be fun.
Well, hopefully we can get, get there soon. Any other trustees have anything to report at this time?
Well, I do have a couple, I wanna shout out to Wendy for the most recent landscapes, very delightful reading, it was, it was a lot of fun to read that, and she did a lot by herself, I'm sure, I'm pretty sure, and again, to our facilities and maintenance team for their work during the polar vortex, anybody that worked outside, wanna thank them, we've hiked a lot of trails and everything's groomed, and it's always wonderful, and then I saw a while back, Steve Grover and Kyle Ames put all the safety equipment, built it for the brand-new Bobcat, and I wanted to give a shout out to them and thank them for their efforts, and that's it.
Hey, thank you, Dave, anyone else?
I, I do have another shout out, I guess, as well, and this gets back to the IAPD, IAPD conference, and this is to Elizabeth, Jenny, and Stephanie, they did a presentation at the conference entitled Lemons to Lemonade, Leslie Knopes' Playbook on How to Thrive in a Pandemic Crisis, and just on a fun note, they, it started out with a spoof on Parks and Rec, and it, which is absolutely amazing, it was very fun, very clever, and just, just a lot of fun to watch, and I have to admit, I watched it multiple times, and then it, it included extended family, like, members like Ed's dog, Jack's, Stephanie's puppy, and I think Laura, is your child flying through the air behind you?
That one cracked me up.
I know, it just, it was amazing, but, so to everyone who put that together, that was, that was fantastic, it was very enjoyable. The presentation itself was incredibly informative, very professional. They discussed the challenges that were faced as a result of the pandemic, touched on the early successes, and it was a very honest look at, at, you know, what they, what they faced, they highlighted some of the setbacks and even reversals and that they encountered along the way, and discussed what worked and what didn't, and covered the challenges and opportunities that they saw going forward with, with crisis management like that. And, and it was something that I noted to myself, you know, we, as a, as a board, we tend to see the final product, and we're not always privy to the internal challenges that they face on a day-to-day basis, and I, and I've said this before, but I think that staff has a way of making things look easy sometimes, and it's kind of in, in my mind, important to keep that in mind and recognize the amount of work that does go into the final work product, such as the pandemic preparedness and response report, but they did an excellent job, and I just, it reflects well on the district, and, and I appreciate their efforts.
And Caitlin, too, was involved with the initial spoof beyond Stephanie.
Okay.
And Caitlin used her magic, which she does with our videos, and put that montage together.
Yeah, that was very clever.
Very good, thank you, Lynn, anyone else? Okay, well, then I'm going to move on to county board liaison report, is Kelly Wagoner with us, or, or, I know she's got another meeting with the county board tonight.
I don't see her.
I don't see. I don't see her on the list of participants.
Okay, well, I, when I saw what she was, what else she had for a conflict tonight, I knew it would be difficult for her, so we'll move on from there to my report, and all I have is a reminder, Elizabeth sent you today a link to a survey for Peter, Peter Murphy, who is going to be here at five o'clock on April twentieth. I see that Dave has already responded and got his done, how long did it take, Dave?
Longer than I thought, maybe a half hour, forty minutes?
Okay. So, so do you think you gave us a good review?
Oh, God, heck, yes, absolutely. But you could make it as long, if the, the questions are open-ended, you could write a book on each question that they ask you, so, I, I, it's gonna be a good exercise, I think it's gonna be good.
Okay, good, I'm glad, I'm glad you got it done, I mean, asking everybody to try to get it done the next two weeks, if, if they're not done and turned in the next two weeks, then, uh, we'll probably send out a reminder, and, and so we keep it going, and at least, I told Elizabeth, she said we have a lot of time, and I said, well, if I have a lot of time, it means that I probably won't get it done until last minute anyway, so, we'll try to get it done the next couple of weeks, and then we can move on from there. With that, I'm gonna move on to public comments, one, I understand we have quite a few people from the public today, so, Stefan, is Stephanie holding the gate on that?
I'm, I'm looking, I don't see anybody, though.
Okay, you're not seeing any hands going up?
Maybe the public doesn't know how to do that, should we let them know? So you got it done, where are you, what do you, I forgot how you do it.
Yeah. At the bottom of the screen, under reactions.
Right, there is a, a place to raise your hand, if there's anyone there that wants to speak. Are you seeing anyone now? Stephanie?
No, I'm still not seeing anyone.
Okay, well, we have a public comments later on, also, at the end of the meeting, so if, if, if somebody thinks of something, then that'll work, so. Okay, um, we get, that brings us to consent agenda, twelve-point-six has an email, you got an email saying, saying that there was a change on, on that, the, the wording was wrong, and it's gonna read April first, two thousand twenty-one through March thirty-first, two thousand twenty-two instead of twenty-one, was just a, a date change, it doesn't really change anything else.
Oh, I see.
About that, it's just, just changes that date from two thousand twenty-one to two thousand twenty-two.
Sounds good.
Is everyone good with what's on the consent agenda? Oh, and then Lynn, I guess you get to make your motion.
I sure do, um, okay, so I'm gonna read it from your list there, Elizabeth. So I move that we approve the consent agenda that includes the following, twelve-point-one, approval of minutes, twelve-point-one A, January fourteen, two thousand twenty-one, committee of the whole, twelve-point-one B, January nineteen, two thousand twenty-one, regular meeting, twelve-point-one C, December seventeen, two thousand twenty, executive session, twelve-point-two, treasures report, twelve-point-two A, acceptance of treasures report for January thirty-one, two thousand twenty-one, twelve-point-two B, acceptance of fiscal year, two thousand twenty-one, general fund budget variance report as of December thirty-one, two thousand twenty, quarter three. Twelve-point-three, resolution number twenty-one dash oh-six, authorizing the destruction of listed verbatim recordings of executive, executive session minutes between January one, two thousand nineteen, and June thirtieth, two thousand nineteen, in compliance with the Open Meetings Act. Twelve-point-four, resolution number twenty-one dash oh-seven, authorizing the release of listed executive session minutes to the public domain in compliance with the Open Meetings Act. Twelve-point-five, resolution number twenty-one dash oh-eight, authorizing the Executive Director to execute a twelve-month professional services agreement between, beginning April one, two thousand twenty-one, and ending March thirty-one, two thousand twenty-two, with Concentric Integration LLC of Crystal Lake, Illinois, for IT and computer support services. Twelve-point-six, resolution number twenty-one dash oh-nine, a resolution authorizing the Executive Director to execute the five-month-to-month residence license agreement as presented through the term of April one, two thousand twenty-one, through March thirty-one, two thousand twenty-two. Twelve-point-seven, resolution number twenty-one dash ten, a resolution approving the fiscal year, two thousand twenty-two salary schedules as presented. Twelve-point-eight, resolution number twenty-one dash eleven, a resolution authorizing change order number one to extend the agreement of working days with Haynes Associates, Inc. of Vollo, Illinois, for the civil engineering services for the Prairie Trail Trail South, Mayor Meyer Drive, stream erosion and trail stabilization project, RFP number zero-three-two-oh dash dot oh-nine oh-one, resolution twelve, I mean, excuse me, number twelve-point-nine, resolution number twenty-one dash twelve, a resolution authorizing the Executive Director to execute an independent company's agreement for electrical and natural gas management consultant services district-wide with Midwest Energy, Inc. of Burrage, Illinois, and to solicit bids for electrical services for fifteen district sites for one year beginning June one, two thousand twenty-one, to May thirty-one, two thousand twenty-two. Twelve-point-one oh, resolution number twenty-one dash thirteen, a resolution ratifying the district's participation in the annual Starcome Twenty-One Radio Interoperability Grant Reimbursement Program. Twelve-point-eleven, resolution number twenty-one dash fourteen, a resolution authorizing the Executive Director to execute the group flexible purchase payment deferred fixed index annuity contract with Nationwide Life Insurance Company, which amends the four-fifty-seven deferred compensation plan offerings effective February twenty-third, two thousand twenty-one, by providing an additional investment option for employee participants. Twelve-point-twelve. One million, is that how it should read, one million four hundred and eighty-two thousand eight hundred and seventy-five from the general fund?
I think we missed.
That should read, yeah.
Good read, ordinance twenty-one dash nine-nine-nine, that ordinance providing for the permanent transfer of one point four eight two eight seven five million from the general fund and four seven four, four hundred and thirty-three from the natural resources
Management.
Management Fund.
Special.
Special Revenue Fund to the Pitchen Installment Loan Debt Service Fund.
Thank you. And then twelve-point-thirteen, ordinance number twenty-one dash one thousand, an ordinance providing for the permanent transfer of one hundred and seventy-three thousand eight hundred and forty-nine from the Pitchen Installment Loan Debt Service Fund to the debt certificates debt service fund. Twelve-point-fourteen, authorization for parent solicit requests for qualifications to identify a reputable company to assist the district with its diversity, equity, and inclusion assessment, training, and strategy design.
Okay, thank you, Lynn.
I'll second.
Is that you, Dave?
Yep.
Okay, Dave, seconds, uh, a roll call vote, please.
Trustee Cook?
Yes.
Trustee Dom?
Yes.
Trustee Thomas?
Sorry, uh, yes.
Trustee Brand?
Yes.
Trustee Fritz?
Yes.
Trustee Campbell?
Yes.
Trustee Hunning?
Yes, motion carries unanimously, thank you. Okay, we move on to new and unfinished board business, beginning with approval of bills payable for the month of December twenty twenty. You received emails with all of those, treasures internal audit, does somebody have some bills to be pulled? Or any explanation on any? Or any explanation on any? Go ahead, Bill.
John, I have a question. Um. And this was regarding, uh, this is on the detailed board report. Wayne's County Country Market Deer Meat Processing. Uh, twenty four hundred and seventy five dollars. Are these deer that we have harvested ourselves? Are are these deer that have been? Involved in vehicular accidents? And um, in other words, what is the source of the deer? And then? How is the meat used after it's processed?
Did you want me to address that, Elizabeth?
Please, yes, thank you.
Yes, uh, Bill, every couple of years, uh, we have to harvest deer from the Lake and the Hills Fenn Site. It's surrounded heavily surrounded by development in Lake and the Hills, and so we can't put our normal hunting program there. So staff does the shooting. Uh, and it saves the district a considerable amount of money because we don't bring in professional sharpshooters. But our staff has all been trained in that and they do the calling. And then the meat is processed and given to local food pantries.
Thank you.
Thank you for that explanation.
Well, I I have a couple to pull. Um, B sixty two fourteen Vendor B sixty two fourteen Burris Equipment. For a hundred and fifty and seventy three cents. Um, H two oh four eight, uh, Harvard Glass and Mirror for two hundred ninety five dollars, ninety nine cents. And I'll stop there unless somebody else has something.
Does anyone else have a bill they'd like they'd like pulled and explain?
Hearing none, I'll go to my third. Uh, R eighty nine seventy two Red Feather Group. For twenty nine thousand three hundred and forty five dollars, zero cents.
Okay, thank you. That will move aside to thirteen one B, uh, Treasurer Cook, could you make a motion for thirteen one B?
Okay, I will uh. Move that we approve the payment to conserve FS on submission of Bill's report. For the period ending January thirty one, twenty twenty one.
Do I have a second?
I will bring.
Pardon me?
Uh, Dave.
Dave, okay. All right, Dave has a second. Uh, roll call.
Trustee Fritz?
Yes.
Trustee Cook?
Yes.
Trustee Dom?
Yes.
Trustee Thomas?
Yes.
Trustee Campbell?
Yes.
Trustee Brandt?
Yes.
Trustee Hennig?
I will abstain. So the motion carries with six, four, and one abstention. Uh, thirteen one C, Bill, could you bring us? Could you make that motion?
Yes, I move that we approve the payment of the balance of bills on the submission of Bill's report. For the period ending January thirty one, twenty twenty one.
Have a second.
How seconded that?
Linda, seconds?
Yes.
Roll call, please.
Trustee Dom?
Yes.
Trustee Brandt?
Yes.
Trustee Cook?
Yes.
Trustee Fritz?
Yes.
Trustee Campbell?
Yes.
Trustee Thomas?
Yes.
Trustee Hennig?
Yes, motion carries unanimously. Uh, thirteen two, Bill, you get to make a lot of motions tonight, so thirteen two.
Okay, um, can we advance the uh, uh, screen because there we go. So I move that we consider the ordinance number twenty one dash nine nine seven. An ordinance adopting the fiscal year twenty twenty two Final Combined Annual Budget. And appropriation ordinance as presented.
Do I have a second?
I'll second that, Chris Dom.
Chris Dom seconds. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, I ask for a roll call vote, please.
Trustee Cook?
Yes.
Trustee Dom?
Yes.
Trustee Thomas?
Yes.
Trustee Brandt?
Yep.
Trustee Fritz?
Yes.
Trustee Campbell?
Yes.
Trustee Hennig?
Yes, motion carries unanimously. And Bill, one more time, thirteen three.
Okay, I'm I move that we approve the ordinance. Number twenty one dash nine nine eight, which abates two hundred and twenty one thousand two hundred and. Fifty seven dollars of the conservation districts twenty twenty debt service property tax levy.
Do I have a second?
I second.
Pat seconds? Any discussion? Then last for the roll call.
Trustee Fritz?
Yes.
Trustee Cook?
Yes.
Trustee Dom?
Yes.
Trustee Thomas?
Yes.
Trustee Campbell?
Yes.
Trustee Brandt?
Yes.
Trustee Hennig?
Yes, motion carries unanimously. Thank you, everyone. Elizabeth, that moves moves us to the legislative update.
I think there's a thirteen.
Oh, you're right, you're right, you're right, Dave. I have it written right here. Thank you.
We add one more.
Thirteen four is the motion or the discussion motion and a second and discussion on the grassland, uh, a proposal we have. Uh, anyone want to have any discussion or make a motion? What what's the trustees' pleasure here?
Fortunately, I didn't print it, so I don't have the wording. Uh, but don't we get it up, uh, either up or down and then we discuss?
I have the wording. Do you want me to make the motion?
If you'd like to make that'd be great.
Okay, so I so move for thirteen four Consideration of a Motion. Authorizing the Solicitation of Request for Proposal for Long Term Sustainable Rotational Grazing Operation. At the Pleasant Valley Conservation Area for Grassland Bird Conservation.
I'll second that.
We have a sec motion main second. Is there any discussion?
Is there anything prepared?
What I mean, is there anything prepared?
Uh, I've read the report, so I really don't have any questions.
Okay, well, I I yes, sometimes if you read a report, you have a question after you read it, and I'm just asking if anybody has any questions after they've read the report. If not, then we're gonna proceed to vote.
Sounds good.
Okay, I don't, I'm not hearing anyone, so we'll ask for the roll call.
Trustee Dom?
Yes.
Trustee Campbell?
Yes.
Trustee Cook?
Yes.
Trustee Fritz?
Yes.
Trustee Brandt?
Yes.
Trustee Thomas?
Yes.
Trustee Hennig?
Yes, motion carries unanimously. Okay, is there anything else under unfinished business that I'm missing here? All good?
All good to me.
All right, I shouldn't have missed that one. I had it written right over here and I messed up. So anyway, let's go on to Executive Director's Report, Elizabeth.
All right, so just some legislative updates. As a reminder, the IAPD Legislative Breakfast. Ours for our area with our legislators is this Friday at eight thirty AM. It will be by Zoom this year, so any trustees, I did hear. I believe Trustee Campbell and uh, I don't know, Trustee Brandt were attending with a yes, but anybody else?
I'm sorry, Elizabeth, are you on? Are you on the IAPD Sorginu Ice Conference? Where are you?
No, I am on the uh, I just legislative update, the legis, I've just given a report. The Legislative Breakfast is this Friday. And I had sent an email out, so any trustees that are interested in attending, there's still time. You can just let me know. I'll send out another reminder.
Yes, send that out and I'll 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 participate.
Okay.
What time is it? What time is that again, Elizabeth?
It's eight thirty AM on Friday morning.
Ooh, eight thirty, I might have to think about that, you know, I just. I'll go.
All right, so we don't have to drive in our legislator. Uh, we had a nice time last year and uh, again. I don't know how Zoom will go, but it'll be great to hear kind of what they see happening down in Springfield and uh, just to set, uh, get to know everybody. So that's a reminder. Um, for anybody that's interested also, Parks Day is normally, last year during COVID, it was canceled. We're waiting still yet to see what's gonna go. Obviously, the legislation, the legislators are in session. And bills are being introduced and the governor is signing bills from lame duck, so that was the update for those. Uh, the criminal reform bill, which is now Public Act one oh one zero six five two. Uh, was signed by the governor on the twenty second. Um, there is potential, I know our legislators. For McHenry County, the majority of them were opposed to this legislation. Um, there's some discussion on a trailer bill. So we'll continue to monitor that. Um, obviously, the forest preserve districts, conservation districts, as we work towards our legislative. That may be one of the things that we're looking at since we have law enforcement within our organizations. Um, on the federal level, um, working on preparing correspondence, we did on special districts. Also have a letter going out to the US Forest, US Fish and Wildlife Service on their migratory migratory take. On birds and the impact uh, with the legislation that was or rules that were put in place. So we are opposed um, to and that they put that back into place as was. Um, NRPA and uh, at the federal level, there's a lot of legislation that is continually to be introduced. A lot of focus on um, opportunities that align with conservation priorities. Um, under the new administration, obviously a lot with economic stimulus on job creation, environmental justice. And then uh, some funding, we hope on bills that would come back our way, um, outdoor recreation related to transportation. The farm bill, um, land and water conservation funding, uh, recreation, green infrastructure. So is this information? Now, at this time of the year, we start to put together our legislative program. Uh, so that we'll have that back in front of the board. So if there's any legislation that you think it's important that um. That we place as a priority for our district, um, now would be the time to kind of work on that, get in touch with me. And then I'll begin to formulate that so I could bring that back to the board so we can put together a platform. And have that approved uh, no later than the April meeting. Okay, um, and then uh, let's see, what else did I have to share with you? And I think that's pretty much it. As far as the conference. Um, for those that attended, I will put some resources out in the board uh, file. Some of the PowerPoint slides uh, that were made available, which is a good read. And then maybe as we work through. Some timing in future sessions, we can kind of go over some of the highlights that might be important just for continued board development. And we'll use that to with staff development as well. Lynn, did you have anything? Because I know you were in attendance as well.
Yeah, no, there was actually quite a bit, like I said, with, you know, being virtual, it was a little bit um, almost. Now, I don't wanna say too much, but it was, there was actually quite a bit to choose from. Um, I'm actually halfway through the one that Andrew, our own Andrew Payne. Uh, put on on uh, information available for um, public meetings and how to make those successful. Um, so I'm still working on that, but the the, a lot of these PowerPoints that they have, the handouts that are available for download. Uh, many of them like Andrews are very detailed, and so even if you don't get a chance to hear the presentation, a lot of that information is still good. So I've I've kind of downloaded those and and we'll get some of those off to Elizabeth as well that maybe we can put out there for people who are interested. And even if you do, yeah, and I would, I would just say, because like some of these things, I thought, oh, you know, I don't really need to hear that one. I've heard that before. Every year, there's new information. Um, that they they that they bring to the table with different law changes and everything else. So it's, it's not a bad uh, review. But.
Okay, very good.
Hey, Elizabeth, I have on mine IAPD Parks Day in Springfield, April twenty eight and twenty nine. Is that still happening?
So I don't have an affirmative yet on the date, but that was what was on their website. So if trustees have an interest, um, it's good to know. So that we can make adjustments and plan for that.
I I'm still worried about in person, but uh, I am interested if I can participate somehow.
Right, I do know. So we'll continue to keep you apprised, but if anybody has an interest and then whether they'll do part of it remote. Andrew, I don't know if you've heard anything differently. From, no, so.
I have not, no.
Yeah, so we'll keep you apprised. I know last year they had to pivot. We were planned. Usually what happens for those that have not gone. Um, the first day is usually the Illinois Association Conservation Forest Preserve District meets down there as well. They're in the rotunda, there's been exhibits. My guess is they'll probably not have that, but uh, because I don't know what the protocols are if it goes. Then there's usually a reception that evening um, that's held. So obviously, social distancing, if it's indoors, that may be a problem. And then the meetings individually with the legislators, and then there's usually been a legislative uh, workshop. Um, educational uh, session the day after, and that makes up the two days.
Very good. Is that everything for you, Elizabeth?
I'm done with my report. Thank you.
Very great. Thank you very much. Uh, committee assignments, so we'll go down those, uh, trustees' report. Attended, um, anyone have any conferences, anything else on a conference or meeting they've attended? Not gonna move on. Uh, Lynn, how about, uh, FREP?
Okay, so the Fox River ecosystem, um, so what's going on next month? Uh, let's see here in March. Uh, every year, I think, starting in twenty thirteen, they've been holding these Fox River Summits. Um, in Burlington, Wisconsin as an opportunity for uh, members along the, you know, the the entire Fox, both in Illinois and. And Wisconsin to come together and share um, success stories or problems and discuss issues. That we face within the Fox River watershed. Um, one, and actually one. One thing that came out of that, which I didn't really realize was, um, in twenty fourteen, it was a presentation by Angie Tornas. Uh, with the National Parks Service Rivers and Trails Program, and from that came our uh, Fox River Trail Initiative. And that is, I've been, um, Karen Miller out of Kane County's been spearheading that and working on getting that as part of the trail system. At the National Park Service. Um, the interesting, the the applications for that actually came to a standstill at the start of the last administration. Um, all the uh, applications that were on file at the start of the administration were not addressed. Um, although a bunch of them were pushed through about thirty, about a, maybe a couple of weeks before the end of that administration. So we expect that our application. Um, will be able to go through this year. Um, and that is just the 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 river's trail up and down. We have a website through the Fox River ecosystem partnership website that you can access the trail and its amenities and maps, interactive map. Um, so that's kind of, that's been kind of an interesting thing with the summit, different topics this year. Last year it was canceled. Because of COVID, this year, um, it's going to be embedded in Wisconsin, has a Wisconsin Water Week. It's a week long event. And our our summit will be held on Thursday, March eleventh. Um, it's an all day event. Um, it is free. You can sign up through our website. Um, John Rogner will be there to talk about the state of Illinois, things that are happening in at the state legislature. Um, that impact us, and there'll be some additional presentations on soil health. Um, there's gonna be a presentation on a hundred years later, a Fox River photo canoe trip uh, program and a few other things. So that's uh, through the website. Uh, that's March eleventh. On Saturday, March thirteenth at eleven o'clock is the Warner Film Festival. We host that every year with a bunch of other agencies. This year, it's Kiss the Ground. Um, it's a full length documentary narrated by Woody Harrelson that sheds light on new old approach to farming called regenerative agriculture. Which we've been talking a lot about. Um, and they put here, you know, potential balance our climate replenish our vast water supplies and feed the world. So access for that is also on our website. That's it for that.
Okay, is that film available in another way at all or?
You know, some of these are, you know, are basically documentaries that are out there, so there may be, I could try to find out. Um, I mean, these were normally, if you think about it, normally we would be gathering in person and we would have vendors. You would have. Um, people from different agencies there to be able to talk about the things that they do. Um, so. I'm sure that there are other ways to see it other way, other than just through us. Yeah, I just don't know offhand. I can find that out.
If you can find a way to get a hold of that, that'd be great.
Okay, sure, I sure will.
Uh, could I ask a question?
Sure.
Um, Lynn, I'll direct it at you because you've been involved with the Fox River. Uh, ecosystem and the associated trail. Someplace in the reading material that we have access to, I came across something about the Displanes. River Trail and some recognition that the Lake County. I guess Park District or Forest Preserve District got from some national organization about the Displanes River Trail. That runs through Lake County. So I have a two part question. Is our prairie trail connected to this Fox River Trail in some way? And does our prairie trail have any national? Uh, recognition or is it part of a bigger system? And you may not know the answer to that, but maybe Ed or someone else does. Thank you.
Yeah, I what I think that the um, our prairie trail, I think there are places where it does go along the river. Although I'm thinking probably more in Kane County, I don't know as you go up north. Um, and so Ed could probably talk to that more in terms of national recognition on the prairie trail. I'm not. And so Ed could probably talk to that more. In terms of national recognition on the Prairie Trail, I'm not sure. The, this is the, they're trying to take the length of the Fox River as part of the Rivers Trails Program through the National Park Service. And that's where this is kind of tying into, so that people can learn where they can, where they can put in the canoe and take out or kayak or whatever you're doing, up and down the river.
Okay, so the River Trail is a water trail.
Is a water trail. It's, it is the water trail. Right, exactly. And so I, yeah. And so, and we're trying to get, we, we, those spearheading this are trying to get it registered with the National Park Service as a national trail.
I guess my point in, in, in some of this is that if, if our local efforts become part of a bigger effort, a national effort, then maybe there is access to funds that are specifically directed towards river trails or, you know, trails that cross state boundaries or, you know, trails that are part of a bigger ecosystem than just McHenry County. So perhaps at some point, Ed or someone knowledgeable could comment about those connections? As, and is there any money available through either the national government or the state government that could benefit our efforts?
So the Prairie Trail, and Bill, is part of the Grand Illinois Trail. Okay, so as far as the linkages that are there, you know, I think the designation, particularly you're right with federal funding coming from transportation bill, you know, always something, and I think with COVID, there's a, definitely a spotlight on, on the efforts of being outdoors and having these, you know, corridors to, to participate in and for healthy active lifestyles, which has always been part of that. I know locally, we sent out some of the regional, John's been working on the mayor's caucus, which I think he'll do a report on, not to give that done. But do you want to talk with anything, is there any bitty work at your level on the connectivity piece?
Yeah, the, directly answer your question, Bill, the Prairie Trail does link into what, what Lynn was talking about specifically was a water trail, as she just indicated. There is a Fox River bike and pedestrian trail, and that links up with the McHenry County Conservation District's Prairie Trail in Algonquin. If you start at the Wisconsin Line, which is the top of where the McHenry County Conservation District Prairie Trail begins, you can ride that all the way down, you can ride a trail all the way down to Oswego, all the way down the Fox River Valley to Oswego. And as Elizabeth indicated a few moments ago, that is part of, or a section of that is part of the Grand Illinois Trail. The Grand Illinois Trail, and I think the, the number is 830 miles. It's basically a big circuit that goes around the top side or the north side of the state all the way over to basically Joe Davis County and Galena area, and then south down through, I think, the town of Savannah. And I believe it comes back on a canal there that runs along the Illinois River. I don't know, maybe the Hennepin Canal or something like that. So it's a very large thing. It's never gotten a great deal of additional funding. It was funded initially by the Illinois Department of Natural Resources to make connections. The value to having something like that, Bill, as you indicated a second ago, is because it gets additional points when we are in a grant competition. So it does, it does qualify for those kinds of things because it is part of that Grand Illinois Trail. As far as being recognized, it is part of a larger network that is recognized by an organization called Rails to Trails Society. I think it is an association, I can't remember, but it's part of a rail trail network where these old rail corridors were converted into bike trails, and we have a lot of them. So, yeah, it has some significance beyond just McHenry County.
Thanks, that's very helpful. I appreciate it.
Bill, the only other thing I could add, which is not directly related to trails, but there is a model for what you're talking about with funds or resources being brought to the district through national recognition. And that is, we are probably one of the closer working entities with the new National Wildlife Refuge. And in the past two years, we do provide an office for them at Lost Valley. We have had, this coming year, we have two of our seasonal positions funded by federal money through the refuge. And a couple of weeks ago, the refuge was purchased an $80,000 piece of equipment for brush clearing and for different kinds of land management use. It's, it sits at our shop and our field staff was recently trained in the federal regulations for using it. So we have a brand-new piece of equipment at our disposal through that cooperative relationship. So, you know, I think as, as you've heard from a couple of staff people here, from Elizabeth and from John, it really goes a long way when you're in one of those parks.
And is it at Keystone? Is it Keystone Facility?
Yes, it is. It's a very nice machine, Dave.
Cool.
Far nicer than we would have bought.
That's neat. That's great to hear. And I didn't know, didn't know that.
Very good. That is a good, good, how many hours a year do you get to use it?
We, we work pretty tightly with them. We did their seeding with our teeter this year. And we anticipate it's basically available whenever we need it. You know, you have to do some scheduling to make sure you don't collide with what the refuge is doing. But I, I would imagine we're going to use it pretty frequently over the next five years.
Well, good. Very good. Anything else on that, on Lynn's report?
Report, Lynn.
Very, very good, Lynn. All right, Dave, we're moving on to, on to crap.
Well, we're having a meeting this Friday, so I'll let you know. Apparently, though, there's some federal opportunities for grants. So they're holding this watershed roundtable, and it's an explanation of those grants, and I'll get more information after the meeting.
All right, good. Good luck with that. Elizabeth, Chicago Wilderness.
The only thing I'm going to report, and I put it out in the WikiWOW, is the Alliance held our keynote, Dr. Finney, last week. I put a link to the presentation, so anybody that would be interested in listening, that we had over 1,000.
Where's that link, Elizabeth?
It was in the WikiWOW. So we recorded, we recorded the session with Dr. Finney, and it was obviously moderated by Dr. Bohis from US Fish and Wildlife. And it was a great, a great presentation and discussion. So again, aligned the work with the diversity, equity, inclusion work that we are doing. And our next meeting with the Executive Council will be in April. And we're working with the Conservation Leadership Institute on their strategic plan and helping us with our green vision. So we're really excited about that and really start to shape with some of the metrics that I've talked about before. So again, I would encourage anyone to, to log on to the Wilderness website. And if you have an interest in, in a particular area, we're always welcoming individuals on various working groups. So we've got one dedicated to agriculture. There's one dedicated to actually land, natural land habitat restoration, outreach to people. So climate and water, so big, big topic areas.
Dave, Pat, Farm Bureau.
We had our monthly meeting last, Wednesday the 17th, this time of year. It's pretty quiet. Only thing, tomorrow, there's a private pesticide test at Farm Bureau. They had, it was before they had in-person testing, and of course, with the COVID, they had to do it online, and it wasn't working too good. So they decided to do it over there, and I'm going to take it over there because I didn't have much luck with this camera business.
Well, good, good luck with that tomorrow.
Yeah, good luck, Pat.
I, I thought you passed that on to Evan, that he had to do that.
Well, yeah, I did, but I asked him today, and I said, I keep getting all these letters about your, your license has expired. When are you going to get it? So I said, I better get it.
Okay, yeah, you'll be out of business. So, okay. We're moving on to Dave and Elizabeth.
The only thing I have is what Linda, Elizabeth already said, IPD Parks Day in Springfield, potentially the 28th and 29th, more coming on that.
And I, and I just looked up IPD, so I misspoke before, and I don't know where unless they've moved the dates because of the legislative. But I had had on the agenda the 28th and 29th, and on the IPD website, it is now listed as May 4th and May 5th. So May 4th and 5th are the dates of the legislative conference. It doesn't say, if I'm reading this correctly, if they're going to do the, the Parks Day at the Capitol and that, that's an in-person, but that's subject to change as we talked about before, right?
Thank you, Elizabeth. Dave, anything else? Okay, Linda, the, the foundation.
Nothing. There was no meeting. There has been no meetings. It's the last one.
Okay. McHenry County Council of Government, Lynn?
The next, my, okay, the next meeting on that, again, is going to be Zoom. It's in May, May 26th at 7:00 PM. And that's the next meeting.
Okay. And you have Green Drinks also.
I do. And so our meeting on that, I think, is March 3rd, whatever that first Wednesday of the month is. It's always the first Wednesday of the month. As I mentioned before, we're going to be having Scott Kikeindahl from the county. He'll be coming and sharing details about the county water resource action plan that was just completed and adopted by the county. And he'll be talking about, I mean, they've got a little description here about the unique geology that supports our groundwater aquifers that supply all of our portable, potable water and help maintain healthy lakes, rivers and streams and wetlands in our region. He, he's going to address the fact that while they seem abundant, they're vulnerable and can be polluted and over consumed. And so he did a really nice job on that. Action plans will be nice for him to be able to highlight that. And he will be, yes, March 3rd, and it starts at 6:00, and you do have to register in advance. The McHenry County Defender's website has the registration for the Zoom link there.
And I have to admit, Scott does a real good job. So it's going to be, I can, hadn't heard it, but he does a very good job. It'd be very interesting.
Very good. So that's March 3rd at 6:00, and you need to go through the Defenders, have a link to get that done. Okay, very good.
Can I actually do another plug? Because Defenders are the ones who actually, you know, they, they sponsor the Green Drinks. They're doing their 2021 annual meeting. I should have said this in trustee reports. Their RSVP is due by March 10th, and their annual meeting, which is partly their fundraiser, is March 14th. They were able to get it in last year in person, just before everything shut down. You can get, you can access in, in reserve tickets there. It's $30 for members, 35 for non. And they, and that's going to be Sunday, March 14th from 4:00 to 6:00.
In person, Lynn?
No, it's going to be Zoom. So you're going to, it is Zoom, but it is a fundraiser. So, you know, they're still looking to have some support there. They're going to have a 50/50 raffle and, and other things. Bill McKibben from 3to50.org will be the, there's a pre-recorded message from him, and then the keynote speaker will be Jim Happenny. He actually was the speaker at the Green Drinks last month. So if anyone's interested, Defenders, Defenders are having their fundraiser in March. Thank you.
Thank you. John Kramer, you're next with a map or bicycle pedestrian plan.
Yes, the McHenry, thank you. The McHenry County Council Mayor continues on that project. I believe it was right after we met, right after the board met last time, there was a public meeting, Zoom meeting, where they presented the information that they had gathered thus far. Basically, they're doing a lot of the background look or information. At that meeting, it was gathering the input from, from members of the public, the attendees, et cetera. And I believe that is open now for, for public comment and review at this point. There are ways from, I think their timeframe is, you know, being done by fall. I think that's their timeframe on it, but, so they got a lot, a lot more information to gather, but it is progressing.
Dave, thank you. Visit McHenry County.
No report.
Okay. And I don't have anything under other outreach contacts at this point in time. So that would move us to public comments, too. Is there anyone that would like to comment?
I don't see anything.
Okay, well, that was, that being said, I would entertain a motion for executives to go into executive session. Somebody want to make that motion?
I move that we go into executive session pursuant to 2C 21 and 2C 2. And to review the closed session minutes.
Okay, I have a motion made to go into executive session. Is there a second?
I'll second.
And Linda seconds, Bill may have the motion. I could have a roll call vote, please.
Trustee Thomas?
Yes.
Trustee Brandt?
Yes.
Trustee Fritz?
Yes.
Trustee Dom?
Yes.
Trustee Campbell?
Yes.
Trustee Cook?
Yes.
Trustee Honey?
Yes, motion carries unanimously. We will go into executive session. We will come out of exec, session back into this, meaning for anyone that wants to stay, but there's only one item left on the agenda at that point in time. But we would be available. So with that, I will see the rest of the trustees in executive session.
All right, see you.
Yep. I guess while we're waiting, I, everyone is aware that Elizabeth, besides getting a lifetime achievement, she did become a grandmother this last, everyone realizes that, congratulations.
Yes, her.
Hey, way to go.
He's a cutie. He's a cutie.
He sure is.
So very good.
All right, I think we're all accounted for here. It's 6:52 PM.
Okay, Megan needs to take a roll call.
Trustee Cook?
Here.
Trustee Dom?
Here.
Trustee Thomas?
Here.
Trustee Brandt?
Here.
Trustee Fritz?
Here.
Trustee Campbell?
Here.
Trustee Honey?
Present. Okay, we're all here. With that, I, Bill, it's teed up for you to make a motion.
I would like to move to approve Resolution 2115, a resolution authorizing the exec, execution of a three-year collective bargaining agreement, April 1st, 2020, to March 31st, 2023, with the Fraternal Order of Police for the Patrol Officers.
Okay, do I have a second?
You do.
All right, good. Linda seconds. Okay, any discussion? Okay, roll call, please.
Trustee Fritz?
Yes.
Trustee Cook?
Yes.
Trustee Dom?
Yes.
Trustee Thomas?
Yes.
Campbell?
Yes.
Trustee Brandt?
Yes.
Trustee Honey?
Yes, motion carries unanimously. I would then entertain a motion for adjournment.
I move we adjourn.
Bill makes the motion to a second. Second, Pat, is that what I got? Is that?
Chris.
Chris, okay, Chris. Sorry, Chris. Chris has the second. Roll call.
Trustee Dom?
Yes.
Trustee Campbell?
Yes.
Cook?
Yes.
Trustee Fritz?
Yes.
Brandt?
Yes.
Trustee Thomas?
Yes.
Trustee Honey?
Yes, we are adjourned.
Have a good evening, everybody.
Thank you.
Everyone, thank you.
Yep.